We're going to, there's going to be a few more of these yes or no questions. So really, it's just yes or no, no, no other
So no.
ramifications. Thank you. Okay. Which one, which one issue facing Palo Alto concerns you the most and why? First up is Vicky.
Housing.
Ed?
Housing.
Doria?
Housing and climate.
You were supposed to say one.
I'll say growth.
All right. Alex?
Public safety.
Brian?
Uh, housing.
Lisa?
Housing.
And Julie?
Affordable housing.
Great, thank you. How do you plan to interact with residents concerning their issues and concerns? So this one is a thirty, thirty, one minute, sorry, one minute answer. So you can now say more than one word. Okay. The question again is, how do you plan to interact with residents concerning their issues and concerns? Julie?
Dang it. Was really hoping to hear some great ideas from other people. No, I'm just kidding. I love humans, so I love interacting with people. I love having people in my backyard. I love being in other people's backyards. I think if I'm elected, I'm going to have regular office hours at Hobie's down on El Camino on my end of town. I'm deeply interested in residents' voices being in my mind and on my heart as I sit here on the dais. I also believe that council has to be very transparent in our work. We've got to make ourselves accessible to the media. In short, I don't know how we would avoid talking with residents and bringing their concerns into our decision making. Ultimately, we're tasked with the authority of decision making, but we've got to make sure we have inclusive processes where residents feel supported, seen and heard as we go about the very challenging work of governing this city.
Thank you. Doria? How do you plan to interact with residents concerning their issues and concerns?
Thanks. So I think I have a really good track record on this. I have always been open to any group or individual that wants me to listen to their side of the story or present their side of the story. I also have made a habit of just helping people when they have questions, regardless of who they are, giving them information. I've always tried to do that in my neighborhood. I particularly try to extend myself to groups of people in the neighborhood that don't get involved in neighborhood issues as much. And some of those are renters and some of those are in some low, below market units that we have in our neighborhood. And I just feel like those folks don't think they're part of the neighborhood, and they are. And so I try to include everyone. The city council has a responsibility to hear all sides of the issue, all concerns. And I'm going to, I've been doing that on the planning commission for almost six years, and I'm going to continue to do that on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, this is a really important question because a big part of why I'm running is to make sure that residents do have their voices heard. One of the lucky things we have in Palo Alto is we have residents that are really engaged with what's going on. And so it's not too hard to get their view on things if you just ask. They'll definitely tell you them. One thing I've been doing during this campaign is just reading all of the emails that come into the city council email address. And you can learn so much about what, how people view different issues just from those. But yeah, really important question. Thanks.
Thank you. Alex?
Yes, I would probably look into having office hours at one of my favorite coffee shops. And I truly believe the most important thing is giving people direct access to myself. I'm doing that as we speak. I don't have a scheduler. I don't have a campaign manager that's monitoring my voicemails and emails or so. I do everything on my own. I plan on doing the same thing going forward if I get elected. And I think that's that shows respect for our audience, for our community. And I believe we should all be looking into the same thing. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lisa.
Great question. Thanks for the question. I also think office hours are a great idea, but a set of office hours doesn't always work for everyone. So I will also be available for phone calls, Zooms, and answering email. I'd also, I think one of my favorite modes will be if somebody reaches out to say, hey, gather a few friends who feel the same way or are also concerned about this issues and, and, and let's make it a bigger meeting. And I also think it's important to reach out to communities that I don't know or that might not be thinking about this, to, to seek feedback actively. And finally, the question was about residents, but I will also make myself available to the whole community, including the business community, employees, visitors, and anybody else who's a stakeholder in Palo Alto. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed?
Yes, definitely office hours, check the box, stay up to speed on responding to emails, not just receiving them. But I also want to emphasize sort of proactive outreach. Sometimes there are outreach around a project. For example, on parks, commission, we, all the time, we got community together and asked what they wanted in the nearby park. I think only once a council member came to any of those outreach meetings. And that could make a difference on something that, particularly if it's controversial, but just to know that they're being heard directly. And so there's proactive outreach that, that can be done. That is also the case if there are obviously controversial issues. The council member doesn't have to wait for it to come through all the process and the commissions and get to the council. They can get an early look from the grassroots, so I would do that.
Thank you. All right, we're back to, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Vicky. I, I checked you all. Sorry, Vicky. Vicky?
Well, to me, this is the joyful part of the job. One of the great joys of being a candidate is that you meet a lot of people you wouldn't otherwise cross paths with, and they instantly tell you what they care about most. Because they think you might be in a position to help them. And it's an amazing way to go through life and the conversations you get to have where you really hear about their concerns and their aspirations. But to more intentionally do that, I would have office hours like the others. Might move them around a bit, make them easier for different people, maybe have some online and others offline. I think also, as was mentioned by a couple, I would want to affirmatively seek out stakeholders on particular issues and make sure that the different voices are heard. That's how I learn. I'm a litigator. I learn by hearing people of opposite viewpoints. And finally, by designing processes, consensus building processes, where I have a lot of experience and a track record as well. I think those are very important for certain of our more complex issues.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. All right, the next question is about housing. And it is a yes or no. Just yes or no? Last one, too. So just yes or no? All right. Are you supportive of changing zoning in commercial zones such as the Stanford Research Park to provide more housing? Note that Stanford Research Park zoning is by agreement not an entitlement. Doria?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Strong yes.
Okay. We almost got to one word from everybody. Almost. We're so close. Okay. Now, how can we be more aggressive on changing zoning to allow more affordable housing? Three of you will answer this in this order, Ed, Lisa, and Julie. You will have one minute to answer. Okay, Ed, how can we be more aggressive on changing zoning to allow more affordable housing?
We have done so in the context of the draft housing element. It started with a housing element working group, then went to PTC, and then went to council. We built in a request for the Palmer Fix, which gets rentals at fifteen percent and in the past, fifteen percent affordable guaranteed. It used to be only properties that were built for sale. We have done a housing improvement program that gives some flexibility there. Excuse me, there is the PHC zone as well. And there are a number of programs built in on top of that that are designed to get extensive affordable housing. So time, go ahead. That's right.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, Lisa.
How can we be more aggressive on changing zoning for affordable housing? I am excited about the thought of bringing more affordable housing to Palo Alto. I think that we need to really make use of specific area plans in designated areas where we really want to bring affordable housing. I think we will be needing to look at denser, taller. We need to look at less restrictive parking requirements. And in exchange, we get the biggest percentage we can of affordability. And we also, by building denser and taller, we can make sure that we have green space and other amenities like bicycle paths in these areas so that the affordable housing is just as nice to live in as the rest of Palo Alto.
Thank you. And Julie, how can we be more aggressive on changing zoning to allow more affordable housing?
I'm really excited about some of the tools the state is handing us to help us meet our housing element requirements. I'm super excited about SB nine, SB ten, others. What I want to address is the Palo Alto process, which is really slowing down the entire process, to be redundant. I was speaking with Jonathan Late, who let me know how understaffed his team is. Having a hard time recruiting, having a hard time retaining people. Why? Because they can't afford to live here. So if we were adequately staffed in the planning department, it seems only logical that we would be able to move through the process, through, move projects through the process more quickly. So I don't think zoning is the only challenge. I think our process needs a tremendous overhaul as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question for Brian, Doria, Alex, and Vicky. Many residents are concerned that new buildings will negatively impact them, including loss of privacy, light, and views. Given these concerns, do you support raising the height and density limits adjacent to single-family homes, low-density neighborhoods, and multifamily buildings? If so, how high would you support building adjacent to single-family homes and low-density neighborhoods? Starting with Brian.
I think that our single-family home neighborhoods are what make Palo Alto so great. So I would not support raising the height limit in those neighborhoods. I think that it does make sense potentially along El Camino or downtown. But even there, I would be really conservative about how much additional height I would be permissive of. Because I think that all of those things that you mentioned, privacy and just the character of the neighborhood are really important. So I'd want to protect that.
Thank you. Doria?
Thanks. So I am not against some denser and some taller buildings in Palo Alto. However, the, the details really matter here. So if we want to retain development standards, so we're building housing for new neighbors that are like the old ones, we're going to want to do things like have transition zones that don't, that allow for lower heights next to low-density neighborhoods. I think it's very key to do that. We have other areas in the, where we can build high, higher up. But the key is to not have negative impacts on existing neighborhoods. El Camino is a great place until you realize that it transitions mid-block to low-density residential. So as long as we do it, we have enough places to put housing identified by the housing element, and we don't have to sacrifice development standards for the people living in the buildings and the people around them.
Thank you. Alex?
I believe that we really have to look into, you know, preserving the character of Palo Alto. And I truly believe we have plenty of options to create housing that would not really affect the R1 zoning. We've seen SB nine effect, you know, this year with only one application that was approved. So that means that the demand for R1 zoning, it's, it's really, really high. I do have a comprehensive plan on adding more housing to Palo Alto. And that's mainly in the lower section of the Stanford Research Park, Stanford Shopping Center, and even by the airport. All of those projects are very feasible, and we can meet the housing element only by building in those three areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky?
Well, this is really one of the central questions that we're grappling with in the housing conversation. It's, it's, it's a toughie. But what I think is that we have a lot of tools that we can deploy to do this and do this well. And when I say this, I mean increased density and welcome new people to our neighborhoods. You know, one of those tools is ADUs and JADUs. So there, you're not going to have to work, we can get some more density within those single-family neighborhoods. Then we're going to need to look location by location. And some will require greater transition zones than others. Along El Camino Real, for example, there's some concern about rooftop gardens and privacy issues. But what if they were walled off from the single-family neighborhoods and looked only the other way? We may be smart enough to have our cake and eat it too in certain circumstances. And I think if we use area plans to talk to neighbors and sit down and look at them, we may be able to have some of these increased height and density closer to single-family neighborhoods while preserving their character.
Thank you. Next question for Julie, Alex, and Lisa. Do you support any housing on the Coverly site? If so, housing for whom? How would you mitigate compatibility issues such as noise, parking, and safety? Julie?
I feel like Coverly is a wasted gem. It's no longer a high school. A lot of nonprofits call it home. Many of us have told stories about our own particular use of Coverly. We treasure it, and yet it is falling apart. And in some ways, it's a visual metaphor of the challenges we face more broadly as a city. So yes, I am very much in favor of whatever happens at Coverly happening soon and including housing atop it or on the ground level. The concerns, how to mitigate the concerns. You know, whenever you build a new community, which set of housing units at Coverly would be, folks are always potentially impacted by that. I would want robust, thoughtful neighborhood conversations about neighbors' concerns. And then I would want council to have the guts to make the right decision.
Thank you. Alex?
I, I think it's really, it really depends on how many acres we end up with. We have thirty-five acres there. Eight of them are being owned by City of Palo Alto, and the rest of them to at one of our forums recently, we found out from one of the board members of Palo Alto School District that they might be okay with only five acres for the school district. So the city could potentially look into owning up to thirty acres. So that's something that I would like to know before I would make up my mind. Initially, I mentioned that it would be great to have mixed use there to fund the project through selling the market rate units. But I really have to look into more feedback from neighbors in terms of concerns about traffic and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
I definitely support building housing on the Coverly site. It is, as, as others have said, it is a gem. And it's, I'm not going to say it's going to waste, but it's sad that it is and has gotten into really poor shape. Housing would be a great use for it. For whom? I'd like to see a range of income levels. Since it's publicly owned land, it's a really great opportunity for very low-income housing, which is very hard to finance because the land is so expensive. But I don't want it to be just very low income. I'd like to see a mix of income levels, including low income and the missing middle. And how mitigate, how to mitigate noise, parking, and safety? Honestly, I'm not sure I understand the question. If it's a new neighborhood, there should be enough parking to meet the needs of the people there, which might not be our current standards. And of, of course, it will be safe, and of course, it'll have the normal amount of noise as do all of our other neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you. New state laws are forcing cities to build far beyond their capability to support housing without insisting that it be affordable and also without state subsidies. What solutions do you envision for these problems? This will be for Vicky, Doria, Ed, and Brian. Vicky? Sure. New state laws are forcing cities to build far beyond their capability to support housing without insisting that it be affordable and also without state subsidies. What solutions do you envision for these problems?
Well, thank you for the question. So affordable housing, as we all know, has significant fun, trouble getting funded, especially here in Palo Alto where the land is so very expensive. So one of the things that has been used and has been proposed for other use is that where there are instances where the city can help provide land, it can reduce the overall cost of the affordable housing. That said, we'll also need to find ways that while unfunded, to try to get funded from our state and federal partners and our county partners, as we have done in the past, and our local corporations, which have also been done recently. So I think there are quite a variety of ways we can get that funding, and we'll need to. And perhaps, you know, some people have even suggested a bond. I'm not yet committed to that, but I think there's a variety of ways, and we are obligated to explore them.
Thank you. Doria?
Thanks. I sort of didn't understand this, the question, the way it was phrased, but, but thanks anyway. I'll talk about the state mandates. First of all, it is a misconception that cities build housing. Developers build housing. Affordable housing developers specialize in building affordable housing. That being said, I cannot envision a successful scenario for these state mandates. It's a one-size-fits-all approach that is, that ignores the past failures of these assigned housings. This is a sixth, this will be the sixth housing arena allocation that we've had. And they've all failed more dramatically each time to produce anything but market rate. They fail worse every cycle in producing affordable housing. And sadly, market rate housing kind of builds itself. So I hope that kind of answers the question.
Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, I think the question was asking about both affordable and non-affordable housing, is I understood it?
Would you like me to repeat it?
Okay, sure.
Okay. New state laws are forcing cities to build housing without insisting that it be affordable
Yeah.
and also without state subsidies. What solutions do you envision for these problems?
Okay, yeah, so I think it kind of bifurcates around market rate versus affordable pretty, pretty radically. And on affordable, it's, it's an unfunded mandate. But we have to work on that because that is a segment of our population that is just sorely needed for, for lots of reasons, including economic and ethnic diversity and getting teachers to live here and things we talk about in all these forums. And there are some standard ways to do that, and I think Vicky ticked off a number of them. I'm going to use my thirty seconds to go to the other side, which is the, the, the market rate side is strictly up to developers, as Doria pretty much mentioned. And the market rate has to be built by them. We're not going to be giving land to them. We're not going to be giving them subsidies. So that has to do with more of the process of, is there enough land? Are there enough sites? Can we even put that many projects through? I think the mic went out. There we go. Could we even put that many projects through during the cycle? So that's, that's a big question mark, but it's up to the, it's not up to the city in that, in that regard.
Thank you very much. All right, Brian?
Yeah, these, these state mandates are definitely, in my opinion, unfortunate and are definitely creating a burden which is going to take some really creative solutions to solve. I think affordable housing is very important. So is market rate housing because it also leads to affordable housing. And that's one key aspect that should be remembered. Other than that, things that the city could do, definitely should try to possibly give land for affordable housing projects or to contribute small financial loans. And that can bring on additional financing from other parties as a result. So it's unfortunate that we have to deal with these state mandates, but hopefully we can do them in a creative way that doesn't impact the city too strongly.
Thank you. Every candidate will have an opportunity to answer the next four questions. What should be done to retain and support retail in Palo Alto, especially small, locally-owned businesses? We'll start with Alex, followed by Lisa, Vicky, and Brian.
I'm assuming that you are referring to retail in downtown California Avenue and, and the denser Palo Alto. Unfortunately, the, you know, most of downtown Palo Alto and Cal Ave Avenue is not being owned by the city. So we are at, at the mercy of private landowners. And the rent is, is super high. And tons of small business owners that I talked to are really hanging by the hair since the rent is, is, is super high. I don't think there's much we can do as a city when it comes to that. What we could potentially do is to look into city-owned properties, but essentially the parking lots that we have. And I do have a plan where we can create about a thousand units in our own city parking lots, and we can subsidize retail on the ground floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lisa.
This is a great question. I've been talking to a lot of people who really miss some of the wonderful small local businesses that have had to close up shop. Palo Alto Sport and Toy, the art store, the bowling alley. And we miss them, and we really want to encourage the small businesses that we have left to be able to stay. As Alex points out, there's not much we can do about the high rents. But there are some things we can do. I observe small businesses need customers, and it's hard to compete in this age of Amazon when most of us probably buy about half our stuff online. So this is one reason I'm excited about growing our community because I think it'll help our small businesses. I would also reach out to the small businesses themselves and find out what their ideas are. And finally, I think we can make some of our retail areas more attractive, like Cal Ave. I would like to see us close it off and make it a real destination.
Thank you. Vicky?
Let's think through these things because it is a real need. And we, we, it, it could add much, restore the vibrancy that we know and love about Palo Alto if we can fix this. So they should be reporting out soon and can help us on things like, should we keep California Avenue closed? You know, I kind of like it when we think about sort of the potential European style. But is that going to help or hurt the retail there? Let's figure that out. I also think the housing we've been talking about and talking about putting it in some of our two downtowns and those areas can help re-energize some of the retail there. It'll maybe shift a little bit to those who live here as opposed to those who commute in to work here, but that would keep it going. I also think that there are things we can do with the events we run in town that if we can get people out for May Fed and art fairs and those kinds of things, that then they'll use the retail in that same environment. So those are the approaches I would take.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, this is a really important question for me. I, I was really saddened to see a lot of these I was really saddened to see a lot of these legacy businesses that have been here for so long close up, like Mr. Cho's and the Liz Cheese Shop, the camera store on California Avenue, Shady Lane, places that have been here forever and they're gone. And we definitely don't want to lose any more. We need to support these businesses. I think the first step is to talk to these business owners and ask them what we can do to help them because they probably know a lot better than any of us what would help them. Beyond that, I definitely think that California Avenue and even probably University Avenue should be closed to traffic. And it shouldn't even be a street anymore. It should be completely redone with trees and just turn it into a European plaza. I think that would bring more people out to the area and that would help businesses. I also think that adding housing downtown into California Avenue would just make it so there's more people around and that would help businesses. But it's a really important question. Thanks.
Thank you. And next, we'll have Doria, Julie and Ed. Doria?
Thank you. So the first thing we can all do is shop locally. That is number one. You know, in the past, there was a problem with illegal conversion, actually, from retail and medical offices to regular office. But I don't think that's a problem right now as much, except they've already converted because we don't know what's going on with our tech sector coming back to work. People are still working from home. The high rents, there are things you can do. I mean, San Francisco enacted a vacancy tax in January. And it might be too soon to see how that's working, but that's something that we can consider. So there are things you can do about high rents. California Avenue has a very specific problem that I would like to fix where allowable uses can't go in because of very different parking codes there. And then we do have a new position, an economic development position, and that person will be working with a consultant on expert.
Thank you. Next, Julie?
All roads lead to housing. This is a perfect example. We've got to build communities that are mixed use. So our housing is near the retail, near shops that are multifamily situations of greater density so that families at all different levels of income can come and enjoy the amenities of the city as well as the shopping opportunities. We need walkable neighborhoods where people can frequent these shops. The shops need business. They need customers and we have to create the customers. I want to echo what Doria said. I love the idea of a campaign of shop local or spend local. I think we're talking about changing behaviors. And we really need to galvanize our community around the imperative to support local businesses through the change in individual behavior. So I envision a social media campaign for this and T-shirts and stickers and all that to motivate a change in behavior. And finally, I also agree with the vacancy tax. I would love to see businesses that have been shuttered for three months or more, maybe it's six months, to be fined.
Thank you. And finally, Ed?
Thanks. On the planning commission, I've actually been working on this since 2017 when we got the retail, ground floor retail protection again and retained it because we need retail. We need retail for walking around, which we call vibrancy in our retail settings. And we obviously need it to, you know, have the hardware store there if you need something to go out from your home, wherever you are. So we need retail. The shop local I had mentioned in a different forum as well. On the planning commission, we did, I think, a good job of expanding the definition of, we went to retail-like to give landlords and retailers a little bit more breadth in terms of what qualified, but we have to be a little bit careful about that. Economic consultant is critical. With retail experience is critical. We're going to build all new neighborhoods in some places or redo them completely like Ventura. They have to have retail as well. And then I think that we should need to talk about programs like the malls used to do. We can do those in strips as well.
Thank you very much. I will ask all of you, please, to continue to use only paper and pen and not electronic devices when you're taking notes because part of this forum is to make sure that there are no notes taken previously or read. And to be equitable, everyone should just be using paper and pencil. Thank you all. Is that correct? Let me just ask the question. Okay.
It's just my-
Corrected. Thank you. All right. Okay, number eight. Policy C-4.6 of Palo Alto Comprehensive Plan calls for four acres of parkland for every 1,000 people. What should the city be doing now to plan for adding parkland to compensate for the increase in housing, especially multifamily housing? First one is Ed.
That must have been planned. I'm a parks guy. Seven years on parks and we looked at this all the time. It's so hard to create land to do this, but that is the national standard. We've been very successful in actually getting about, I want to say 40 acres off the top of my head. Our ex-chair of parks is right over here. She can help me. But we still have to be very vigilant about doing that. And the question starts to presume the answer, which is we have to do it now. I'm absolutely adamant that if we're going to do complete refurbishments of neighborhoods like the NV cap area or new things along San Antonio, parks are absolutely essential. Parks, open space and all the amenities are absolutely essential. It's very hard, it's very expensive, but we've had some success there. And we just have to basically keep our foot on the accelerator and as always, look for more funding to be able to do that.
Thank you. Alex?
One of the options would be to increase the requirements when it comes to open space for new developments. But obviously, some new developments would not be able to create much open space or parks. And the land is obviously so expensive in Palo Alto when it comes to creating parks somewhere else. So we could potentially increase the park fees for new developments in order to be able to fund slash buy land so we could create parks somewhere else. I believe this would be my preference, especially when it comes to commercial development. That way, we incentivize, you know, more housing versus commercial. So I'm really in favor of potentially raising the park fees for commercial developments so we could fix the housing and also we can create more open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brian and then Lisa.
Yeah, parks are incredibly important to Palo Alto. So I think the solution is just to make sure that as we're adding new projects, we're making sure that parks are also being added and that it's not just parks either. It's dog runs, it's green spaces, maybe on rooftops. There's a lot of creative ways that we can really maintain the canopy and the feel of Palo Alto. I think that it's important that we not just cram small parks in with the project that look artificial and don't really match the type of parks that we have currently. We need to have large parks that are actually suitable for all sorts of uses. So thanks.
Thank you. Lisa?
It's a great question. I go back again to, this is why, you know, in order to plan for parks, we need to have a plan. I favor a specific area plan. And that's where there's a trade-off in density. If you build taller and denser, then there's more land left over for parks, which I think is really important. The developers have to contribute and help develop the parks. And I think another key thing is I'd rather have a park than a parking lot. And so we really need to work on, as we plan our new neighborhoods, we need to work on bike infrastructure. We need to work on transit options. And I'll also just call out that the Coverley site already has a lot of green space and we want to make sure that we retain that as it gets developed.
Thank you. Next up, Julie, Vicky and Doria. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I got it.
Okay.
The comp plan says four acres of parkland for every 1,000 people. Wow! Because we're supposed to build 6,086 units in the next eight years. And at a minimum, that's 6,086 people and likely more if they have a spouse, a partner and kids. So we're looking at, at a minimum, 24 more acres of parks, parkland to accommodate or to go along with all of the arena allocated housing. If you draw a line in Palo Alto at Oregon Expressway and look south, we have fewer parks on the south side than on the north. So I'm interested in more parks on the south. And I'm actually a fan of the viaduct solution to the grade separation and would like to turn, while the train goes up 20 feet, I would love the area that is our current train tracks to be turned into a park that'll be jogable, walkable, freaking beautiful canopy of trees, a meeting space that unites the entire city north to south.
Thank you. Next, Vicky?
Well, parkland is one of the things that is just a hallmark of Palo Alto. It's interesting because when we compared the number of parks in Palo Alto with the number in our sibling city of Bloomington, both cities were so proud because they had such a huge number. It was the same number, but it was impressive. So we need to preserve what we have and we need to design new communities to also have this green open space, whether they be residential or even some of the commercial tracks. I also think we may be able to take some of our poorly used commercial space and design some of it for parkland. And again, it goes back to this area plan, comprehensive area plan, where you can look at it holistically to make sure we're serving both purposes. And then I just want to tag on my last 15 seconds that I was changed. My pad went from white to dark and I couldn't see it. So maybe when I was adjusting the light, someone thought I was looking something up. Sorry, I'm just a high-tech Silicon Valley girl, I guess.
Thank you. Doria?
Thanks. So, yeah, we have a deficit of parkland. The first thing we should do is dedicate, which protects the parklands that are not dedicated from being used for a different use. I think that's very important. Secondly, we should have development standards for new building that require actual open space for the building and open space for each unit. In other words, we should not diminish our development standards entirely as we densify and grow. You know, rooftop gardens are great, but we have no standards for landscaping them. So all it is is a space up there that could be radiating heat with a bunch of HVAC equipment. As far as the right-of-way for the train, the right-of-way to the train, regardless of whether it was covered over, would still actually belong to the railroad. So we'd have to purchase that land. And purchasing land is what keeps us from having enough parks, the price of it, in Palo Alto.
Thank you. We talk a lot about building for new residents, but what would you do to serve existing Palo Alto residents? The first four up will be Alex, Julie, Vicky and Lisa. Alex?
It's a very wide question. Don't even know where to start. So what would you do for the current residents? When it comes to quality of life, the first thing that I would be thinking of as of now could be public safety. I truly believe that we could make progress when it comes to public safety. And that is one of my priorities. That's one of the reasons I'm running. And I truly believe that we deserve better public safety. Other than that, I would like to improve traffic, save bike lanes, you know, routes, you know, to schools and potentially connecting open spaces, schools, shopping centers with bike lanes would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
To serve existing Palo Alto residents, I think we have to bravely articulate and co-create with them a vision for 2050, 2070 that is one where people are thriving. We are meant to be an ecosystem as a city. I like to say we're not Palo Atherton, we're Palo Alto. And that means we're supposed to have people of all income levels doing all kinds of jobs, providing all kinds of services, people of all ages, so that our city thrives. And we're losing young families because it is unaffordable. When we lose young families, we're going to have to start asking, will we close Duvernec, Addison or Walter Hayes? We are going to be losing the very amenities, our public schools, that people come here for. So we're at a crisis and I think our residents want, I think they sense it and know it and want to believe in a coherent vision for the future of this city that they can get behind and also help bring about with their personal choices. And yes, some sacrifices, but ultimately pulling for a future we can all thrive in.
Thank you. Vicky?
Thank you for this question. And we were all asked at a recent forum or on a questionnaire for our vision for 2050. That is what left to my mind as well. And when you think about that, you think, what do we want to keep? We want to keep what makes Palo Alto special. What makes us love it? The look and feel of it, the intellectual curiosity, the music, the public art. But then we also want to get out of the way some of the things that may be keeping us from enjoying it. So right now, we're coming back, restoring services that were cut during the pandemic. Police and fire, they're up to be fully staffed. We're having trouble hiring. Let's get them here. Let's make that funding permanent. Our libraries, that is to me a real gem of this community. It's something we value greatly. I'd like to restore the funding there and put the hours back. But really, I want to know what residents want. And that early question about how we keep in touch and find that out, that's what we need to do for the Palo Alto of the future.
Thank you. Next, Lisa?
Another great question. How to serve existing residents? We can start with getting our library open hours back to their pre-pandemic standards. I'd like to bring back the crosstown shuttle. Grade separations, we need to pick one and start funding it and apply for more funding because those will definitely serve our existing residents along with other forms of smart traffic management. And I think that we also really need to look at affordable community rental spaces, you know, like what Coverley offers and also some local churches. But I talked to a lot of people who are like, where can we rent space for dance lessons and music activities and all these community things that we love, but that can't pay market rate rents? But I also want to close by saying, I think the new residents themselves will be a boon to the existing residents, as Julie did a really nice job of explaining.
Thank you. And we'll go right down the line. So Ed, Brian, Doria?
Okay, thanks. Yes, the first thing that we need to do for residents is preserve, not add anything. We need to preserve the culture, the neighborhood feel. I love the name Palo Alto Neighborhoods. That kind of says it all. And we need to make sure that that stays intact. That doesn't mean there aren't going to be any changes in any neighborhoods. Don't misread that. I'm just saying that what people like here is their neighborhoods, the diversity of neighborhoods that kind of roll up to what is the total of Palo Alto. And it extends to parks and retail and some of the things that we just talked about and libraries because that is part of the kind of fabric that we love. It then goes on to things like, we have to improve the crime here. That has to be improved. That's not, that's not working right now. And the other thing we can do is bring new neighbors here to live with the neighbors that are here, as we've talked about before in terms of the ethnic diversity that I think would be a value add for us. And we can take surveys periodically and ask residents.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, this is pretty much the crux of why I'm running. And it's a matter of, the way that we can serve existing residents is by listening to them. And they are talking. The city doesn't seem to be listening. Outside interests seem to be taking priority. I think that housing is important, but I don't think that it's more important than listening to the concerns of our existing residents. And I don't accept the notion that they should have to sacrifice. If someone moves into a neighborhood with a certain feel, they should be able to expect it to stay that way. There are other solutions that we can come up with to add housing than to just trample on our existing residents. And so basically, just listen to them and fight for them.
Thank you. Doria?
Thank you. So I- So I think what our residents want is a Palo Alto that's kind of like Palo Alto now and we need to maintain that livability and all the great things that we agree on that I don't have time to mention now. Another thing we can do is take the community survey, which has just gone out or just about to go out, take the results of that and really look at it and take it seriously. It's the residents who are telling us what they want and we should listen to them. I agree that we've had a 30% reduction in staffing and crime and, and police and fire over the last 15 years. And I think people really feel that crime level going up and I think they're very concerned about it. I also think that people are really concerned about code enforcement, the most popular topic is gas blowers. We just hired a new code enforcement officer to focus on that, which I want everybody to know because it's a great improvement. And also reasonable transitions between.
Thank you for honoring the time, I appreciate it. All right. The, the next question is for everyone again. We'll start with Lisa, Brian, Doria, and Ed. Do you agree with the compromise Palo Alto negotiated with opponents of the business tax? If not, what would you have voted for? Lisa.
I think it's really easy to say that, oh, I wish it was a higher tax, oh, I wish it didn't have a cap, because I do wish those things, but at the end of the day, a business tax that's going to be not actively opposed by the business community and has an active chance of passing is much better than my fantasy tax. So I think it's important to get a toehold and let's pass measure K. And, you know, and there's always the future to find more ways to raise, to raise revenue for the city and including that the business community, which is part of our community, is helping pay their way.
Thank you. Brian?
I think it was a great compromise. The fact that they're not going to oppose it is really meaningful. Any tax is better than no tax. I'd like that there's a minimum, so we're not harming our small businesses. Yeah, I think it was a great compromise.
Thank you. Doria?
So I think it's a disappointment to a lot of people in this city that the business tax is going to be not, is going to be, I think originally it was 40 some million and then it was 16 and now it's nine, but you know, it's a start and we got to start somewhere. It's been impossible to get a business tax in this city for a long time, decades. So I think this is a good start. Most appropriately, it did not ever intend to include small businesses. So I, I don't know what happened because it was negotiated behind closed doors. Maybe that's how it needed to happen. It would have been interesting to hear more of the discussion in a public hearing for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, thanks. You're kind of asking us to be an armchair quarterback and we weren't in the locker room getting the plays. But given what played out, I don't think the cap, I'm answering both parts of your question there, I don't think the cap is ideal. And I think the, on the, on the high end, and we only got sort of the, the minimum, but I'm encouraged because it's not zero, which is where it's always been. So this is a step, we'll see how it plays out. It doesn't buy a lot of affordable housing or grade set, but it helps, it helps, it helps. I want to be positive on this. And then there's other ways we can put things with that to get that done, the things that, that we need to get done. So kudos to those that, that got this far with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next, Alex, Vicky, and Julie. Do you agree with the compromise Palo Alto negotiated with opponents of the business tax? If not, what would you have voted for?
Yes, I'm happy to see a galvanized small business community. I'm, small businesses being protected. I would, if I were to change anything, I would have looked into differentiating a 10K when it comes to square footage business like Apple Store versus Taverna. I think I would be inclined to look into having a business like the Apple Store paying a bit more of a fair share, potentially based on number of the corporate employees. That way I think we will bring more business tax to the, to the budget and we are still protecting the small, local, family-owned businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky?
Anytime you're trying to make a change of behavior like this, to start something new, it's not easy to do. And so I'm glad that we did reach a compromise and it will be on the ballot. I think Lisa spoke to that well. Specifically, I love the exemption of the 10,000 square feet that, so the small businesses are exempted and most, all the businesses on University Avenue. I'm fine with having half the rate for the first couple of years to sort of stage it in, I think that's appropriate. You know, based on my personal experience renting large units of office space about four times over the course of my career in big law here, I felt that it wouldn't have hurt business to go with the bigger numbers, especially given the premium they pay over San Jose and others. But I wasn't in the room and I trust the people who did negotiate it because they got a deal that's not opposed and now it looks like we will start and I'm, I'm glad of that.
Thank you. Julie?
No region is wealthier than us. No one has more money than we do in the aggregate here in Palo Alto and Silicon Valley in the San Francisco Bay Area. And yet Palo Alto has no business tax, which I couldn't make sense of. Obviously, we want to protect our small businesses and yet we have some extremely wealthy corporations and I have to ask why they're not asked to pay their fair share. They're also artificially propped up with Prop 13, so they're really getting a break. I'm grateful to those who worked out this deal. A tax is better than none, I agree. Allison Cormack, my dear college friend, is very pragmatic. She said the business community will fight and that's what the business community threatened. Others say the business community was bluffing. I don't know, I wasn't in the room. I wish that we had calculated it differently, I'd rather see it be based on their gross revenues or market capitalization. I would like to see a higher tax in the future and I believe the folks who say that having this one in place will make the higher future tax more likely.
Thank you. All right. The next question is for Ed, Doria, and Lisa. Are you in favor of the utility transfer tax? And if so, how would you explain its benefit to residents? Ed?
Yes, I do favor it. It's been an integral, integral part of our system for a while. It's very difficult to explain these things to residents. So I would do a lot of preparation before I was going to try to go out and, and explain that. So that's, that's what I would do.
Thank you. Doria?
I do support it. It's something that we've done for 70 years in Palo Alto and I understand that the lawsuit, I'm not a lawyer, but I understand that the lawsuit was based on slight nuanced changes in the state law and that's why we have to adjust our code to be in sync with that. That being said, if we didn't have both the gas transfer and the business tax, we wouldn't be able to even keep our head at the same level in terms of our budget. And that doesn't take into account for the fact that the cost of everything is rising. So I think we kind of have to do this now and figure out in the future how to increase revenues for the city.
Thank you. And Lisa?
I definitely support transferring funds from the gas utility to the general fund. I would explain it, that we have always done it since we founded the gas utility. I would explain that your gas rates will not go up as a result of this transfer, since it's been in place for a long time. I would explain that your rates are still lower than PG&E. And speaking of PG&E, PG&E is a profit-making institution and they pay out dividends to their shareholders. And the mental model for this is that we own our utility and we pay out our dividends to our own community to fund, for example, libraries and other programs that we all love. And I would finally say that, I had some other super compelling argument. The, the gas transfer, oh yes, if we don't have a gas transfer, then our gas will be less expensive than our, than our electricity in a time when we're encouraging people to electrify, which is an urgent need on account of climate change.
Thank you. The next question is for Brian, Vicky, Alex, and Julie. What is your opinion of the Palo Alto Fiber Project? Why does it warrant the cost? Brian?
I'm definitely in support of the fiber project. I think we're at the heart of Silicon Valley and it doesn't make sense that we haven't already done this, honestly. I think that it's a project that will ultimately pay for itself. We don't even know some of the benefits that it could bring to us beyond just faster internet. There's other benefits that we probably can't even imagine. It's something that we should have done a long time ago and we should definitely do now.
Thank you. Vicky?
So the fiber project is one that at least the extending the backbone piece is, is fully funded and so we should at least be doing that. And I understand we're going to be getting some more information to help us make a decision about whether we should go into that business as well. But we have a great track record of running utilities, running them profitably, and there's no reason to believe that this shouldn't also be one. It would add competition to the market with other existing providers. When we are, when we're putting other utilities underground, we can add this right in. If not, we can do it through micro trenching, which is a cheaper way. And I understand we might get back a cheaper estimate for what it costs. And so it seems to me that when we look at those benefits and our track record and the fact that Palo Altons can get cheaper, more reliable internet, we should go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Next, Alex.
I wouldn't consider this, this project as a top priority. I would be a bit skeptical when it comes to keeping up with technology, when it, when it comes to facing giants like Verizon, Xfinity with tons of resources behind them. I would rather, you know, save this $143 million budget to potentially improve the electrical grid to avoid the power shortages. And, yes, I would be skeptical that the city would be able to run it successfully since we've seen other projects that could definitely be improved, such as managing the ADUs, affordable housing, and so many others. Thank you.
Thank you. And Julie?
The pandemic proved to us that if you don't have good internet access, you cannot participate in our democracy, you can't access education, you can't access information. The internet has become like a utility, it has become like roads and electricity. If you do not have good access, you are a second or third-class citizen across our America and as it turns out in Palo Alto. A brief story. I do a lot of public speaking for a living, all of my speaking went online with the pandemic. And as I tried to get on Zoom, I would inevitably lag and people would say, where are you? And I would say Palo Alto and they would say Palo Alto has bad internet? And I was like, I guess so. So my family bought a second type of broadband. We have AT&amp;T and Comcast coming into our house in the hope that one of them is working at any given time. So heck yes, I want Palo Alto to be magnificent across education, entrepreneurship, science, libraries, parks, cafes, and I want us all to have working internet. Yes to fiber.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. We still have more, but I just wanted to take a breath. The next questions are from the audience. So how can we engage new residents in our neighborhoods and community? Starting with Doria, Julie, and Lisa.
So I was really involved with my neighborhood association before I got involved in citywide things and it's really challenging. You really have to reach out to new neighbors. I live in a neighborhood that has a lot of renters, well, all of Palo Alto has a lot of renters and you really have to work extra hard to make sure the renters know that they're a part of the neighborhood. That's, and I think I mentioned something about that earlier apropos of another question. You know, it's a really important thing to do and I think we just have to do it one-on-one and neighborhood by neighborhood and include people. I don't, so how can we engage new residents? And the second part of the question?
And our neighborhoods, how can we engage new residents in our neighborhoods and community?
Okay, I just think it's a one-on-one, every day you gotta, you know, people think I'm kind of strange because I say hello to strangers whenever I walk by them and I think it's a nice thing to do. It starts a conversation, you gotta start a conversation.
Thank you. Julie?
Like Doria, I like to talk to strangers. I've moved around a lot as a kid, I know what it's like to be new, I know what it's like to be different and I think that's created in me a compulsion to just try to make sure I'm friendly and kind to people I meet. When we bought our home on May Bell Way in 2000 and had to renovate it because it was truly broken down, we were faced with a neighborhood cabal of people who thought it was their right to tell us what to do with our limited dollars. They were cold, unfriendly, unfeeling. I couldn't change them, but I could change the tone and tenor of our street by being a better neighbor than the neighbors I first met when we moved there. It takes effort, it takes intentionality, it takes the presumption that everyone belongs, it takes the curiosity about newcomers, but not a fascination. Curiosity mixed with humility and an effort to simply get to know someone else's story and welcome them. It also requires name tags. Every neighbor event should have name tags because older people, younger people, people forget, name tags serve everyone.
Thank you. Lisa?
I love this question, it's a problem I hope we will have soon in spades. I think the city can provide, they might already, funding for block parties. We should keep doing community events like concert series. We have sibling cities, what if we had sibling neighborhoods for our entirely new neighborhoods? You can have a mixer. Our schools really create community and it's one of the reasons I want to make sure that our new developments are spread equally across all of our different elementary schools as much as possible because elementary, schools have a great way of, of absorbing new people and embracing them. And similarly, I would turn to Avenidas for our new folks who are seniors to, you know, help fund and provide programming that welcomes every generation. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed, Alex, Brian, and Vicky?
Same, same question, correct?
Same question.
Yeah, I think first of all, Doria summarized the first thing you have to do is you just have to be very proactive individually, you just gotta go knock on doors, not like we're doing right now, but knock on doors when you find new neighbors. And I, actually I am finding some new neighbors knocking on doors and so I'm introducing myself and saying, you gotta come to our block party, it's in October and so on. So that's the first thing and it's hard because everybody's busy. The neighbors are busy, you're busy and so on, but I think it's kind of an obligation to create community. So the second part of it is, I think that you should try to have a neighborhood group that can also be proactive, not just by asking them to the block party, but you could have a set of sort of, you know, what do we do when we find a new person in the neighborhood? Let them know about this, let them know about that, set up the first, you know, 30 days where they have three dinners, things like that. So the, the neighborhood group as well as the individual, both have to work on that thing together. And I'm thinking of trying to get neighborhood competition like volleyball, just to get an interaction going.
Thank you.
Definitely volunteering. When I, when I moved to Palo Alto in 2010, I started right away volunteering for the local school. I really got to know 400 families that used to belong at Addison Elementary. I volunteered for every single trip, for every single PE activity that required volunteering for about 10 years. for about 10 years. I also coached AYSO for about seven years. So I met hundreds of families, you know, through coaching AYSO, and that was a wonderful organization as well. I recently got invited by Annette, and I joined the block preparedness coordinator volunteering program. And there are 900 members there. So definitely a great way to meet other members, but also members of your own community since you really have to be in touch with with neighbors, essentially. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I think that the best thing we could do is strengthen the neighborhood groups and associations. The city could help out a lot with that. Maybe on the website, having a section so that people could figure out which neighborhood they're actually moving into and which neighborhood association they belong to and maybe do some some advertising to just get the word out, maybe a drive to get people to volunteer for their association. And then beyond that, just block parties, I think, are the best way to do it. One-on-one is great, too, but block parties are maybe even more fun. So I definitely support those.
Thank you. And Vicky?
Well, like Brian said, let people know about PAN and all of your member neighborhood groups. So for the community broadly, yes, Alex, volunteering. The hours I've spent with youth sports, with school projects, with church outreach, really get to know people doing that. But I think to bring it down to our neighborhoods, there's sort of collective things we can do and individual. Collectively, block parties have been mentioned. We have a lot of fun with those on Barber Drive. Google Groups, so we can, you know, if somebody has tickets or needs tickets or something. But individually, I garden. And when I garden out front, people walk by with their dogs, with their strollers, usually when I'm looking absolutely sweaty and hideous. But I strike up so many conversations that way. The other thing I do is visit the new neighbors who moved in. So the couple next door with their little kids that moved in and their parents from India who are watching them during the day, we took them something when they moved in, and we got invited to the three-year-old birthday party. That was fun. I had to leave a campaign event early to get there. But that but that's how you build those bonds.
Thank you. Next question for everyone. How would you, as a council member, help stabilize local rents and mortgages to retain, attract, maintain a diversity of jobs like service workers and paraprofessionals and mid-range salary earners? First, Julie, then Alex, Vicky, and Ed.
So we're talking about affordable housing. And as has been discussed tonight, there are basically two ways to get it. You can have 100% affordable housing units, and you can have market rate that includes a percentage, say 15%, 20% or a higher percentage, as is being proposed at Creekside, of below-market rate. I am in favor of a whole lot more market rate projects, including the below-market rate percentage. I think 100% affordable is most appropriate for specific communities that have specific needs that where wraparound services can be provided for them in the building, such as is the case with Wilton Court. So we just need a whole lot more of this affordable housing focused on our workforce. Our firefighters can't live here. I met a firefighter today who's like, you know what's worst about not being able to afford it? My kids can't go to the Palo Alto Unified. He even asked them. Okay, they want it as much as we do. We must build workforce housing, and I'd like to see if we can get Stanford University involved in solving that problem.
Thank you. Alex?
Yes, definitely affordable housing, especially for for the very low income bracket, the 30% to 50% AMI. In, you know, case in point, when it comes to Alta Local, 4,400 for one bedroom, it's not really affordable. If you were to have that bracket, 30% to 50%, that would be 1,600. Just to debunk the affordable myth, you know, an affordable unit costs about 900K. So that's not going to come through private development. I think we really have to get in our driver's seat. And if you look at our track record at the city, we've been producing 30 affordable housing units on average per year since 2013. We really have to be developing on city properties, partnering up with Stanford, getting funds from state, county, federal, you name it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky?
Affordable housing is an excellent way to do that. I think there's additional ways. We have a bill in this state, a law in this state, that caps rent increases at 10% year over year. That's still pretty high. I would be open to looking at possibly increasing that to other sustainable levels. We also have a law that requires that leases be a minimum of one year long, so they can't keep raising the rent with short-term leases. A renter registry that tracks those would help us see if that's being violated, both the the rent increases more than 10% and whether the leases are less than a year long. We could also track evictions. I worked for 20 years at the Law Foundation where we prosecuted wrongful evictions, and there's a lot of them. And so that would be something that where it could help. We also helped organize renters like at the Buena Vista so that they can collectively approach landlords to try to save their affordable housing and stabilize their rent.
Thank you. I'll read it one more time. How would you, as a council member, help stabilize local rents and mortgages to retain, attract, maintain a diversity of jobs like service workers and paraprofessionals and mid-range salary earners? And the next person is Ed.
Yes, thanks. This primarily focuses on new affordable rentals where we could make some progress. It's going to be harder, just to be candid about it, on new affordable purchases because they're still going to be over $1 million, and that's not going to look cheap. I mean, I'm broadly generalizing here amongst the 6,000 units that were targeted to put up. But there are other ways, as Vicky started to itemize, that we can stabilize rents, two of which that she did talk about. We gave seven recommendations to council out of the planning commission, and they're in process of doing that now. One that she didn't mention, just so I can add to what's already been said, is that we worked on one that would lower the security deposits, amount of dollars needed, which helps a person get into a house to begin with. So that's another real value add. And and just giving people information so that they know if they have a problem, that they have to do something legally would be helpful as well.
Thank you. Lisa, Doria, and Brian?
So I definitely support the rental registry as a really important step in understanding the the rental situation so that we can use data to drive good policy decisions. Additionally, I think that we, you know, need to have an absolutely zero tolerance policy for renter intimidation, unlawful evictions. We should be providing legal services to tenants that are having a dispute. We need to preserve the rental housing that we already have. We need to protect the renters. And as we've been talking about, we need to produce more affordable rental housing. And I'll use my remaining time to point out that 50% of our gas revenues come from businesses. Thanks.
Doria?
Thank you. So I do think we need to start with rental protections. Others have mentioned it, but I'll go over the rent registry. Enforcing the one-year lease is a really important aspect of this to me. And we offer mediation in the city when there are disputes over this kind of thing. But no tenant has the time or the money to enforce the one-year lease law. I also think there's another piece that we're not picking up on, and that is businesses like Airbnb that do two, three things. They create a neighborless blocks. They have the potential for creating neighborless blocks. It's the it's not the problem with Airbnb. It's a problem with short-term rentals occurring where they shouldn't happen. And we don't really enforce that very well either, and it also competes with our local hotels. So those are some ideas. I think we should also go to 20% inclusionary housing, and I would like data on ADUs. How many are really being used?
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, this is a really important question because we need to have our teachers and firefighters and police officers and other workers like that be able to live here. It's it's actually really critical for us. If there was a major earthquake, all of our public safety officers pretty much don't live in this city. So where are they going to go? They're probably going to go back to protect their families, and we're going to be left without anybody to help us. It's critical for that we solve this. And the solution is definitely affordable rentals. And the way that we get there is by all the ways that have already been mentioned. We just need to make it a priority and get it done.
Thank you. All right. The next question, also for everyone in this order. Lisa, Brian, Ed, Julie, Alex, Vicky, Doria. Many ADUs seem to be used as offices, gyms, et cetera. Is there a way to ensure they're actually used for housing? Lisa?
I don't know. I want them to be used for housing. I think everybody wants them to be used for housing. I would be happy to ask staff to suggest policies that, you know, incentivize their use as housing. At the same time, if they're used as an office and that removes a commute, and if eventually that house is sold and then it becomes an additional housing unit for someone, I'm not sure that's an entirely bad thing. So I don't, I'm not sure we need a super, super hard crackdown. But yes, I would, I would like to learn more and see if there are some smart policies the city could enforce.
Thank you. Brian?
I'm not necessarily sure that I have an issue with it not being used for housing. I think it should be up to the to the homeowner, how they want to use that. And and like Lisa just said, in the future, that that might become housing. And so I don't think that it's really an issue that the city needs to get involved in.
Thank you. Ed?
At the current time, that's kind of a yes or no answer, which is no, there is not a current way to do that. They are trying to build into the rent registry an assessment of that, so we can just kind of get a little bit of data out there. But in case folks don't know, the little-known secret is that all these ADUs are counted as part of the state quotas. So as part of the 6,087 units, they are currently counted, and the state, oddly enough, doesn't care what's happening in there. So that's just the current state of affairs.
Thank you. Julie?
Sadly, there are wealthy people among us who will continue to prioritize their own needs over the needs of the whole. I would support a campaign among Palo Altons to do the right thing. We are facing a housing crisis. We have people who can't afford to live where they work, can't afford to send their children to the great schools in the city in which they work. I believe there's a moral imperative to build more housing and without preaching about it, but rather convening a set of conversations about what we can do to solve this problem, I think we can actually incentivize people to do the right thing. There are also people who benefit financially from building an ADU because they'll receive some rental income. Or if they go full SB9 and do a lot split and sell that back half, they can really rake in a lot of money. People, a lot of us, among us, need that revenue. So the way San Jose pitches it, it's like, do your part for the city, pocket a little cash for yourself. It's a win-win.
Thank you. Alex?
First, ADUs are mainly built on a state law that we have in place, and it's it's not really cool to use those places, those spaces for storages, home offices, and so forth. Second, those units count against the housing element. And that's super important, not to mention that, you know, we have a small number of ADUs. I think from 2018 to 22, we have an average annual producing about 60 ADUs. So as a city, obviously, the code enforcement department is really understaffed. We are not being able to manage 60Us a year, and we are looking to projects as like fiber. It's really perplexing. We really have to staff, you know, the enforcement department correctly in order to be able to track those ADUs for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky?
Okay, so we now know the answer is no. And what I'd like to do is to get some data about that, if there were a way to find out how many of these ADUs are being used for housing. And it'd be interesting to know that for surrounding areas that are less dense, like Portola Valley and Atherton, where I bet there's a lot of ADUs trying to make up the RENA numbers and probably even less use for housing. Because then we can figure out what things should be and 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 talk about how we can have new policies that would incentivize its use. Is whether or not we could, in conjunction with the ADU approval process, create our own incentives to actually use it for housing? Like perhaps there are some rebates or tax incentives or other things that that we could do to give somebody a plus if they use it that way. So not a mandate, but a bonus for it.
Thank you. Doria?
So currently, it is perfectly legal to use, build an ADU and use it for any purpose you want. So no, we can't do anything about it. The thing that strikes me is that the state has mandated colossal amounts of housing for a city like Palo Alto, and yet it was silent. The state was silent on the use of ADUs. You gotta wonder why. So yeah, we can count some ADUs based on the past year's production towards our RENA allocation. That's the 6,000-plus units that we're that we have to account for. But I don't know, it's kind of a question for the state. What were they thinking? But as I said earlier, I think it'd be really useful for the city to have data on how many are being used as unique housing units, you know, or even for extended family, which is fine, too. That's a unit. So those are my thoughts.
Next, we have a question for Doria, Brian, and Ed. The city is finally enforcing the ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. It's been on the books for decades. What would you do about enforcing our laws and code enforcement? Doria?
So code enforcement is something I've talked about frequently. I'm very interested in it. And somebody that I didn't know in the city, I guess a voter, sent me a question, may to send it to all of us, I don't know, about this very issue. And I happen to know, I happen to know that there was this new code enforcement officer that was hired just to go after these, to focus on gas blowers. His name, his name is Craig Hartley, I believe. Anyway, because I knew the support person in the department, I just called her on the phone and said, hey, what's up with this? And what's his name? And what's going on? Code enforcement has been historically a very important, important department in the city that has been flip-flopped around, didn't have a home, and didn't have enough funding and staffing put into it. So I'd like to see code enforcement taken more seriously in this town on everything, not just gas leaf blowers.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, code enforcement is one of those things that definitely gets a lot of attention and a lot of people talking. I also met the new code enforcement individual, and I think the the approach that he had for the leaf blowers made a lot of sense, going after the landscaper's education. He's bilingual. So I think that a lot of, a lot of great steps have been made recently. And so if we could just continue along that path, I think we might make some good progress and hear less about this being an issue.
Thank you, Brian. Ed?
Yes, Director Layton, the last planning commission, said that they've increased the staff for code enforcement by 100% because he is now on duty. So we're up to two. Unfortunately, that's not enough. So what I've said over the last couple of years, informally, is that what we need to do is we need a few case studies of people getting tickets for that. And that could be sort of anybody in the planning department that's authorized to do it, spending an hour a day. They're not hard to find leaf blowers blowing all over the neighborhood. And just, you know, give a couple citations so people know that we are going to enforce that because it's the law. And when that gets picked up and that 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 goes around and maybe even gets some publicity in the the local press, I think that it could calm down on its own while we're waiting for the department to go up by 100% the next time.
Thank you. This question is This question is for Vicky. You say, "I am committed to ending exclusionary land use. What specifically do you mean by this and what changes will you make to achieve it?"
Well, thank you for the question. So there are still, there's many aspects of this and I don't know that I can get through all of them, but there's historic things. But I was speaking in part about the fact that there are still in some of the titles and deeds, some exclusionary language that we're signing. It may not be enforceable, but it's in there. And I find that offensive and inappropriate in 2020. I think there's also some historic legacies where we have certain communities who are excluded from certain areas historically and have not been able to buy in because of the high cost of land. And so I think that when we're doing our housing policies, this is part of the affordable housing to diversify our town and make sure that we are not excluding based on our property cost.
Thank you. The next question is for Alex, Julie and Lisa. Do you favor a freeze on office development until we get our jobs-housing imbalance under control? Why or why not? Alex.
A freeze on office development?
Until we get our jobs-housing imbalance under control.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how you get the jobs under control. It's really driven by the private sector. When it comes to office, I do like limits in general, so we could potentially use those as tools to deal with developers. But I truly believe that we should look into what type of office space. We don't need a huge warehouse, you know, owned by Amazon on University Avenue, but I think I would be in a favor of having small 2,000-square-foot offices where we can incubate small businesses. And I truly believe that we should look into grow-and-go model, as I mentioned before, in terms of keeping those businesses incubated and as they grow, they should move to a different city. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie.
I'm a little nervous about a freeze. I think when you use a freeze, you're sort of signaling that you're in a dire circumstance. I know that our jobs-housing imbalance is significant, but no, I'm not in favor of a freeze. I think we have a 50,000-square-foot cap every year and I'm fine with that currently. I'd also like us to find ways to encourage and incentivize owners of commercial buildings to build housing atop them, dense housing that they can run out to people who need a place to live.
Thank you. Lisa.
As I've said at other forums, I viscerally feel the need for more housing in our community. I don't viscerally feel the need for more offices in our community. That said, I don't think a freeze is called for. I don't understand the ecosystem quite well enough, but I believe that office, allowing some office development and the impact fees that come with that, or as Julie says, enabling, you know, a combination of office and housing could be a great way to get the thing that I really want, which is more housing. So I'm no on a freeze.
Thank you very much. All right. So now we are very close to the end of this evening. And what we would like you all to do is to ask you to tell us in 30 seconds why you should be on city council. All right, we're going to start with Doria. We're going to go this way this time.
So one of my strongest values is a steadfast belief that the future of Palo Alto should be determined by the residents of Palo Alto. So I have a lot of experience in Palo Alto city issues. I'm qualified. I'm committed. I'm independent and I want to work for you. We're going to densify. We're going to get denser. The state is requiring it, but we should do so.
Finish your sentence.
Well, what I wanted to say is that Palo Alto is a community, not a commodity.
Thank you. Next, Brian.
Yeah, unless I'm mistaken, I think I'm the only candidate that was born in Palo Alto and grew up here. And I think that that does give me a unique perspective on the city and one that could be really valuable on the city council, especially in protecting the city and maintaining the character that it had when I was growing up.
Thank you. Ed.
Yes, I think the citizens understand the commitment and tenacity that I've shown over the last 13 years on all the things I've been involved with on the commission and the housing element and so on. And I've got a lot done, a lot of results, and that's all I want to do by getting on council, is get more results done. This year particularly, it's important that you have very experienced council members because there's 20 years of council member service rolling off. That's a lot of institutional knowledge. If I'm put in there as one of your three seats, I'll hit the ground running and be effective for you day one.
Thank you, Ed. Next, Lisa.
I think voters really want to find a candidate who shares their values and who can get things done on council. I hope I've been able to show you what are my values tonight. I welcome, I believe in an affordable Palo Alto, a welcoming Palo Alto, a sustainable Palo Alto. I can get things done, I think, as I've shown on my six years of service on the Utilities Commission, as well as my extensive professional career in technology and creativity. And I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. Vicky.
Well, thanks so much for having us here tonight. This was a real joy to think through these things together. You know, any body benefits from a diversity of experiences on it. I've lived here for 30 years. I've raised children. I've watched my parents age here. I've opened businesses here. I've run nonprofits here. And I bring a lot of different experiences and I've built a lot of bridges historically. I think that's something where I have a track record and have a diversity of support that we'll need to solve these complex issues going forward in our city.
Thank you. Julie.
We are experiencing gridlock in our city in a number of ways. We've not made our grade separations. The Caltrain is coming. Other communities have done it. We haven't yet and we're going to pay for that. Cumberly is sitting and eroding into a shadow of itself. And of course, we have the infamous Palo Alto approval process. I haven't served on a commission or a committee, but neither have DuBois or Phil Seth, who are rolling off before they were council members. It is not a prerequisite. As a lawyer, I fought for people in need. As a Stanford dean, I moved an entire community toward a new vision of what was right and I can do that in Palo Alto.
Thank you, Julie. And Alex.
Residents are the core of our community and I'm here to listen, adapt and serve our community. That's why I'm being endorsed by people like you and small, family-owned local businesses. The future of Palo Alto is at stake here and 90% of the issues that are being brought at the city council level are land use and finance-related. That's precisely the expertise I bring to the table. We are not here to experiment with the future of Palo Alto. Please join me in moving the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And folks, that wraps up our forum for tonight. Thank you all, to all of the candidates, to the media center and to the many members of PAN who helped make tonight's event possible. And thanks to all of you for watching. And now we will return to Becky for a wrap-up.
Thank you, Hillary. You did another bang-up job for us. We will double your pay. All right. Look for that bonus check in the mail. I wanted to say thank you. Candidates, it's very important, your being with us this evening and sharing your vision for Palo Alto. I also wanted to say huge shout-out to my co-chair, Sherri Furman. She's in the front here. She just kicks it for us. I mean, if it weren't for Sherri, it just wouldn't be happening tonight. So I just say thank you, Sherri. Thank you to Peter and Jeff. You're amazing timekeepers again. I want to say thank you to the guys in the booth who wrestled with our audio problems earlier, that we had technical difficulties and you guys rocked it for us. So really thank you for fixing that. And thank you for watching. Please tell your friends and neighbors this will be available to watch on YouTube, et cetera, and so forth. Go to the PAN, what is it, panneighborhoods.org, p-a-neighborhoods.org and read the questionnaire cover to cover. It's fascinating what our candidates have told us about their vision for Palo Alto. All right, I think that's it. Thanks for watching. Fabulous audience, fabulous questions, amazing candidates. And thanks again, Sherri, Jeff and Peter. All right, we'll see you next time.